With our law enforcement and others to bring that down. I want us to be in the top 10. I want us to be the number one, but this isn't the category we want to be in at all. Whereas two in five or 40% of the people will experience physical violence from an intimate partner in their lifetime. Women ages from 18 to 34 generally experience the highest rate of intimate partner violence, but anyone may experience abuse from an intimate partner. Men who has children witness their parents' domestic violence are more likely to abuse their own partners than sons of nonviolent parents. One in 10 high school students experience physical violence from a dating partner in the last year, and 43% of dating college women report experiencing violent abusive dating behaviors, including physical, sexual, digital, verbal, and other controlling abuses. The City of Columbia recognizes the commitment of Sister Care and the South Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault to providing lifesaving resources to domestic violent victims and their families. So I, Daniel J. Rickman, the Mayor of Columbia, South Carolina, along with my fellow members of city council, do hereby proclaim October 25 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I encourage all my citizens to participate in this. Out there, make sure that you're taking advantage of the resources, taking advantage of the opportunity to work with other folks, but also know how to support these organizations because they are making a difference. And today, we all need to chip in. It's who we are. We're one of the most compassionate cities I know. And I know folks will turn out. I know folks will donate. But the awareness campaign doesn't need to stop on October 31st, folks. We need to keep moving forward and talking about it, making sure, understand, people understand there are options, and we're here to support those options. Leah, I'll let you start if you want to say anything.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor Rickman and City Council for all of your support. I'm Leah Weissavick. I'm the CEO of Sister Care and have the great privilege of working with a team of 65 individuals who serve tirelessly, survivors of domestic violence, in our city and in our community. And we are just so fortunate for the partnership we have with the city, whether it's getting dunked in a dunk tank, or toiletry drive, or the walk, fundraising, and just the overall support, knowing that you're here to support us means so much because, you know, we can't do it alone. It takes all of us working together, especially since 42% of South Carolina women experience domestic violence in their lifetime. We've got to change that statistic, and it takes all of us working together as a team. And so, thank you so much for recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month and for our long-term partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Charity Collier, and I am the Director of Systems Advocacy at what we like to call SCVASA, so we don't have to say the long name. But I just want to thank you all for the leadership that you have of bringing awareness to domestic violence in our city, and having collaborative work with you all helps us bring more awareness and hopefully someday be on a better list. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. I've got proclamations to present, and all we can do is round here.
Mr. Mayor, as you take your seat, I wanted to particularly shout out our public and media relations department staff. They really take to heart, really all year long, the support for the domestic violence awareness and with our partners. We will move into the Consent Agenda Items 3 through 9. Is there a motion?
Do we have a motion on the floor for? I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussions, questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown.
I would maybe like to highlight Item 7, and I guess some of them parks and wrecked to talk about the Southeast Park Community Center improvements. Is that possible?
Yes, sir. We're excited to move them forward, as I know you are and all of council.
I think it's just important that we talk about our investments back into the community and make sure that people know that this council is not only pro-park, but also pro-community investment, and we're going to keep going and going and going.
Yes, sir. I know Todd can highlight a few of the amenities.
Sure. At Southeast Park. So it'll be a brand-new community center. We'll have an indoor/outdoor restroom. It's really positioned right on the pond, so you can take advantage of the deck that's covered as part of the community center. It'll have a event center also. We can have outdoor classes. We can have events out there. We'll have a tennis pro shop, also a pickleball pro shop out there as well. We will have a little kitchenette. It's very multifunctional. I think it'll be a great investment for that community.
I did too, and I think what really is just fascinating as well, it's just amazing, is how we put the effort into each park as its own identity and not just cookie cutter, you know, we're going to do something the same everywhere. So, thank you for the effort. It's really just so important, I think, that we just kind of change our mentality about how we think about investing in ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for Todd leaves. Pro shops, pickleball, tennis, is that with a small business? What's that relationship there? Because I would love to see that repeatable at maybe another Columbia Tennis Center, if possible.
I could see it forming partnerships potentially. Maybe internal and both partnerships for that.
Fantastic. Thanks, Todd.
I think it's also important to mention that this entire project is using businesses here in the Midlands and in Columbia, the majority in the City of Columbia limits, but also in the surrounding area. So, once again, our commitment to continue to try to keep our dollars being spent locally.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Martin.
For the record, that is our city landscape architect, Mr. Todd Martin.
We've got to keep him a secret, though. We don't want anybody to steal it.
I know, we're talking way too much about him.
I think maybe he could change his name.
Yeah, I'll figure that out. I'll try.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to, and if City Manager Wilson wants to talk about this, you know, we've talked about it in different settings, but how we're moving forward with some of our affordable housing strategy, and Item Number 4 is focused on helping us build out that plan for city employees.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bustles. That's another great agenda item to call out. And we realize through council's encouragement that, you know, we need other professionals at the table with us. So this contract allows us to move expeditiously with actually building homes in a very organized manner, where we are putting to use state funds that we were very blessed to receive, as well as, of course, any other federal dollars. But we are super excited about the consultants we have at the table with us to include this contract and, of course, Dream Key Partners, and looking forward to give you all an update pretty soon on some exciting path forward that we have for the community.
Any other discussions? We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Can you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance is first reading, Item 10, ordinance number 2025-078, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, Vulcan Development LLC, as endorsed by the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 11, ordinance number 2025-081, granting an encroachment to Robert Manetti for the use of the right-of-way area of the 1,500 block of Daly Street for the installation and maintenance of a block retaining wall and stairs adjacent to 3125 Longleaf Road.
So move. Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 12, ordinance number 2025-082, amending ordinance 2025-003 and ordinance 2023-065 to grant an encroachment to Gaston &amp; Green LLC for the use of the right-of-way area of the 700 block of Green Street for the installation and maintenance of stairs within the Green Street right-of-way.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 13, ordinance number 2025-090, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 15, Parts and Recreation, Section 15-2, permits for group use of parts or a festival.
So move.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Double seconds. Any other questions or concerns? Very much looking forward to seeing an active Finley Park. Very excited about the future that it holds. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
And, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, I was going to say this. So, Item 13 is not involving a change of any user fees, but it's, this particular item is adding some of our parts, clarifying where there's a permit for use of the covered areas.
Yes, ma'am.
So, like Roy Lynch Park, for example, that is what Item 13, and to your point, we're coming into Number 14 regarding the user fees that do require a public hearing for Finley Park. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make that clarification before your vote.
Yep, I jumped ahead.
No, sir, you're fine. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
President.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
And moving into that public hearing and ordinance for first reading, Item 14 is ordinance number 2025-055, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 15, Parts and Recreation, Section 15-5, user fees. And again, this is for public hearing to be open, Mr. Mayor, as we prepare for the grand reopening of Finley Park on November the 15th.
Are we going to have a, is somebody from staff going to talk, give a general overview?
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
That would be you, Mr. Director.
This is Director Kenya Bryant with Parts and Recreation.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. Yes, sir, this is an exciting moment for us as we get ready for the grand reopening of the jewel of the city, Finley Park. And so, these user fees are basically, we want to make sure that our fees for rentals match the investment that we made in Finley Park as far as the $25 million investment. So, of course, we went through this over the last couple of weeks, me and Mr. John Katz, putting these fees together, and so we just want you all to vote tonight to move forward.
Is there anybody here to speak on this issue?
And no one signed up, Mayor.
Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, I think I'll entertain a motion at this point.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenya, and we will bring this back for second reading next week. Public hearing and first reading for zoning planning matters. Item 15 is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for the southern-western area of Holloway Road, and we have Mr. Andrew Livinggood, who's on deck.
Andrew, don't take it away, but we're going to have to make some adjustments. Not used to seeing Ms. Hampton in front of us.
I'm used to that as well.
On a weekly basis, but it is, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, great. So, yes, the, you know, this item is a request to annex the property, assign the land use classification of urban edge residential small lot, and assign zoning of residential single-family small lot district, RSF 3, for a pending annexation, and the property is currently classified as neighborhood medium density and zone residential 2 by Richland County.
This was staff approved and, are planning? I'm sorry? Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet, so hold on one minute. No worries. It was a planning commission approved. Now, we're at the point is if there's anybody here to speak for or against this item.
Yes, Mayor, we have two individuals sign up to speak. Before I call their names, I will remind speakers that they have three minutes to offer their remarks. We'll start off with Ms. Cora Swink.
Hi, I'm Cora Lee Swink, and I am speaking for the Capital View Area Neighbors Association. So, we've got 835 homes coming right in this area. They did a two-year traffic study. It's too close. We've got schools that are running over. We just can't handle all of this at this time. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Next, Mayor, we have Ms. Cindy Clough.
Who never has publicly spoken before.
That's all right. Just take your time. We're good.
Holloway Road is a dead-end road. My parents built their house, first house, 62 years ago. It is a medium-density neighborhood, and if you change what amounts to three front lots of that road that would face the road to medium, small lot density, you can put 12 houses on what amounts to three houses on this lot. It would completely change the neighborhood, the look of the neighborhood. So, we are firmly against it, and you've already deferred the neighborhood that's going to be a part of, which is Cassetta Pines, that has been deferred at the last meeting, and this is another tract that they're trying to add into that. That, with all the other new development in that area, is 600 and some odd homes. Three of those are going to exit onto Patterson Road, which all surround Burnside Elementary. I went and spoke to the, well, Ms. Cora went and spoke to the vice principal, and I spoke with the staff. They are at capacity. They said they are so upset about even thinking about that many homes coming in. In addition to the Cassetta Pines with the 243 or 244, there are two townhomes, neighborhoods right across the street, and they're all going to be compacted into that Patterson Road, Caroline Road, Trinity Road. All three of those roads run into Leesburg Road or Garner's Ferry Road, which are already so congested. And my request and prayer is that we can at least leave this little tract of this land I mean, we're already deferring.
Is the developer here? Is anybody here representing this development? Are you finished, ma'am?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we can get the developer up here.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Lechner. I do not represent the developer. I represent the Civil Engineering of Columbia. We are the engineer for the project. As the citizens said, the project adjacent to this parcel was deferred. However, any homes that were to be built on this parcel would not be accessed by Holloway Road. They would be accessed by Patterson Road. There's been traffic studies performed with meetings with the SCDOT. We've had, the developer has had meetings with the City of Columbia staff and intends to meet with the public in the near future before the next planning commission meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, I also making these comments to Councilman Brennan, that I'm not so much worried about this particular tract of land, and I apologize for saying it that way, but I am worried about this area. I mean, this area is unfortunately going to be developed, and that's just kind of the way things work. However, I'd like to defer this as well and maybe spend some time going out there with Councilman Brennan and just kind of taking a little bigger look at the area of this and maybe just seeing if there's some things we can maybe talk about or just spend a little bit more time doing this. So, I would like to make a motion to defer this until I can spend a little bit more time looking into this particular development. I wasn't really expecting, based on the staff recommendation and the planning commission, I really wasn't expecting the neighborhood pushback, and, which I had not gotten any to date, but I think we can defer this and maybe get a little bit more clarity going forward.
Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Brown. Andrew, before we take a site visit, can you please share the, I think the resident mentioned a two-year traffic study? Can you please share that with us? I am very sensitive to the elementary school pedestrian bike safety, you know, go out there a good bit. Actually, Mayor, that's where I did my census for the Hummers count.
Pit count?
Yeah, pit count, right there behind the Walmart. I know there is a lot of forest out there that sounds like wants to be developed, so any due diligence material you could share with us before we dive into this? Andrew, that'd be great.
Sure. So, as was mentioned, a site plan for the land that's already inside the city.
All of it. Share all of it with us.
Right, so that went to the planning commission just earlier this month.
Right.
And as was mentioned, the planning commission recommended deferral to further conversations about the subdivision, but I believe there is a traffic impact study. I don't know the details of that traffic impact study myself.
Yeah, just share with what you have. Maybe there's some give and take on pedestrian infrastructure investments that could be made.
Sure. I mean, I do know that it is a requirement to build sidewalks as part of that subdivision and, of course, along Patterson Road as well.
Well, there's the baseline, then there's above and beyond, so.
Right.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, what with this traffic study?
To be honest, I'm not intimately familiar with that myself. But that is something that is reviewed by the planning commission.
That's good.
All right. So, Brown? To the council's point, I think it's relevant information. I mean, that area is, and again, I'm empathetic that that area is developing past the point of a lot of people thought it was going to develop, so I really am. However, it's likely that that area is going to continue to develop, and I think it would just make sense to maybe, maybe this is a good time to put a little more strategy into some of the things that are going to happen out there. So, I don't want to give you the false impression that there's not going to be more development out there, because there will be, but I also understand it's very congested out there. My daughter went to Sand Hills for a decade, and over that decade, you know, the traffic gets worse and worse and worse and worse and worse. So, anyway, I'm not anti-development or even anti-this project. I just want to get a little bit more intelligence on the ground.
So, the intent of the motion, Mr. Brown, is to defer?
To further. Correct, for further review and discussion and bring it back to the next meeting.
All right. Got a motion, but I need a second.
Second.
If I may ask, is that to defer the public hearing or to defer the first reading or both?
Both.
Both.
I got, I got them.
That would be November 18th, Mr. Brown.
Be the earliest. Yes, ma'am. So, we got a motion and a second to deferral.
And as part of this, I'd really like to see the traffic studies. I'm sure Councilman Brennan would as well.
But, you know, the traffic studies, obviously, for the bigger. I think this piece down that we're talking about currently, also understanding how it plays in, so I think it's very important. So, with that, we have a motion and a second. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown and Mr. Mayor, for clarification, do you want the discussion you're having now to serve as the public hearing, or do you want it to come back again for another public hearing and the first reading?
I took it as they wanted to defer both of them.
Okay.
Same.
Okay, and so that may require additional notice, so it may be into December.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
There's a motion and a second to defer both the public hearing and the item until November 18th. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Let's, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, let's say, and that during improper notice, so it may not be November 18th, just to defer.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you all for that clarification. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item, I will, you may want to consider along with the next item, which is Item Number 17.
16 and 17.
These are two related items. The first one is a request to rezone 1125 Rosewood Drive from Community Activity Center Corridor, CAC, to mixed-use district. And Item 17, and you may recognize that property is old Seawells, or it is Seawells, and Item 17 is the annexation, future land use amendment and zoning map amendment for 1027 Rosewood Drive, and the request is to annex the property, assign the land use classification of Urban Core Neighborhood Activity Center, and assign zoning of mixed-use district MU2 for a pending annexation. And the property is currently classified as mixed residential high-density and zone general commercial by Richland County.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against the item? Mr. McCutcheon?
Mr. McCutcheon signed up to speak, and he will be followed by Mr. Steve McNair.
Hey, I'm George McCutcheon, and the Seawell family has been a staple around Columbia for a long time. Great place, great events, great memories. Some of the brothers are getting a little older and thinking about handing it off to one of the sons, letting him continue maybe somewhere else. This is some valuable property, and we have a great project, and I'll pass this out if I can, that shows the layout of the proposed 71 townhomes. And the project will be about $44 to $49 million on the tax rolls for 71 townhomes. We had looked previously at 400 student housing and decided against that and would rather this be for young professionals and other working people downtown to maybe help with the Garner's Ferry traffic problem. Seriously, I mean, you can have sprawl or you can have density, and this helps with density. So, got a good project there, as you can see from the initial planned layout. We think it'd be a nice fit there downtown.
Well, first of all, thanks, thank you for speaking, but also want to thank the Seawells and other folks working on this. I know they've been approached by a lot of different folks, and this project really is a lot better conceived and a lot better for the future, and we need young professional housing in proximity of downtown. I mean, a lot of the young professionals are moving to other cities because of the proximity of living downtown, looking for not necessarily a home, but looking for, they want to be able to shut the door and go out and go to concerts and travel, and so there's a real need here. So, I appreciate y'all working through and getting something that I think everybody will really enjoy and be an asset for us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, George, I know we're just in the concept stage here, annexation, you're not bound by anything, but it looks like some great.
We are pretty far along with that if it were to be approved.
Perfect, got you. Great pedestrian density along with that. I'm sure your responsible growth would be sidewalks, proper infrastructure, potentially looking at the regrading of Olympia Avenue right there before you get to the railroad track. It's pretty gnarly there, so, yeah, any thing that, again, we talk about over, above and beyond, as far as investing in infrastructure. If there's a conversation to have with us to make sure that y'all do that, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, I think we'll be open to that. I'll let the developer talk to that. Any other questions?
Mr. McNair?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Steve McNair. I'm here on behalf of my company, Palmetto Alliance Property Group. We have a sister project in Greenville, South Carolina on Church Street using this same product that's born out of Nashville, Tennessee. It's three stories with a walkout on top. It's really, really quality product. So on Church Street in Greenville, it's adjacent to the Serene Stadium and near the new county square there. We were tasked by Lennar Homes to find good urban infill projects for the same, exactly what the mayor was saying about. We think there's a great market there for young, whether you're a graduate student or whether you've just recently graduated and you want to live in the urban core. Lennar has a vision of paying more for land, but getting more for their product, increasing their margins overall across, you know, multiple cities in the Carolinas. So we've been tasked in Columbia, Greenville, Asheville, some of the other areas to help them in that mission. So we have two now. We're here, obviously, on behalf of the Seawell family. We did see the student housing project that was there, and I was thinking, oh my gosh, that's a monstrosity. But, you know, we feel real good about the product. We feel very good about the location. I am a Gamecock, and I will have a unit there.
Well, you know, from a market study, our middle market study shows 85% of the needs in the future are not single-family homes for us. So finding the right place in the appropriate places to create those balances are important. And this, to me, is a perfect location, so.
Thank you. Yeah, we, I think the definition of a townhome is a home in town. There's a lot of being built in suburbia that, but this is, this is a true townhome product here, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions regarding the product.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank Steve for his investment in Columbia. But for going forward, though, we have banned the word Greenville. Okay, so next time, you're going to have to, you're going to have to call it the G-word. So just wanted to let you know that for the future.
I get it. I'm a citizen.
You said it twice.
Oh, I did say it twice.
Hey, I bet he didn't say it a third time.
Bailey, remove him. Me.
I'm not sure we can, I'm not sure we can scratch it from the record. But anyway, thank you for your investment.
Thank you.
And it's really just, it's just another amazing project, and it's, the time is right in Columbia for this type of project. So thank you for believing in Columbia.
Amen.
And thank you for doing this project.
Absolutely. We always believe in Columbia. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, real briefly?
Yes, sir.
I know we're in the concept stage of this, but for somebody associated with this project, are we, is the target market, was it market rate, student housing? Is it, what are your, y'all thoughts with that?
Well, this is built to sell product. And initially, in conversations with Lennar about this product, they think they would be in the mid-fives, somewhere in that range. I would guess that by the end of the project that they could be in the mid-sevens, you know, and that's, that's the reality of it. But I don't think that, you know, once they get this to market, I could expect it to be in the, you know, somewhere between the mid-sixes and mid-sevens when it's ultimately sold. It's a very nice product, very nice product at the end of the day. It will not be built to rent. Sorry, I didn't mean to abandon my perspective here.
It's pretty high-end.
It's, it's pretty high-end, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else to speak for or against this item?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve.
Is there a second? We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That was for both items, Andrew.
That's items 16 and 17.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 930 Brantley Street. It's a request to annex the property, assign the land use classification of urban edge, mixed residential, and assign zoning of single-family, sorry, residential, single-family, large lot district for pending annexation. And the property is currently classified as mixed residential, high density, within a priority investment area, and zoned residential 2 by Richland County.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item for annexation?
The move, Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, hearing none, seeing none? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a zoning map amendment request for 5003 Red Street. And it's a request to rezone the property from Neighborhood Activity Center Corridor District in a North Main Corridor Design Overlay District to Community Activity Center Corridor District in the North Main Corridor Design Overlay District.
All right. Is anybody here to speak for or against this item? Ma'am, podium is yours.
My name is Renita Caesar. I've been reporting this board several times. I'd like to reiterate my stance on 5003 Red Street. This business, this building was purchased from the city last year. It was purchased for the use of a tire and rim shop. I did go through the proper procedures to have it rezoned for special use or rezoned, and it was listened to, and they did, I don't know if I'm saying it right, approve that it would be okay to have it rezoned from NAC to CAC. And I also have contacted the community in that area. I did provide last time copies of almost 400 signatures, also a letter from the community backing my proposal to open up this rim and tire shop. It's been postponed several times. Also, I do have a letter, and I think all you guys received a letter today from Tina Herbert, where she has approved to go ahead and finally let this go through. But I've done everything that I was supposed to do. I've also collaborated with South Carolina DJJ in order to use the rim shop and my other businesses in that area, because I do also own a childcare center and a nonprofit youth center, in order to incorporate and collaborate that together to give the youth something to do in that area. So I'm just waiting on this to open so I can continue what we're doing in the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
I don't have any. I've got your letters, and I got several calls from some of the neighbors over the last couple of days. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
The move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor, we appreciate your patience. I know it's been a-
Thank you.
-somewhat of a process for you.
It was a process.
It was good to get here today.
So we got a motion and a second and further discussion. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all your help.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to make a difference.
You have a good day.
All right, the next item is a major amendment to a planned development. Basically, it's a property generally bound by Bull Street, Colonial Drive, Hardin Street, and Calhoun Street, AKA the Bull Street District. You know, this is a little bit different than what you normally see before you, which is a map amendment or a tax amendment. This is a major change to a planned development. It is essentially a text amendment. It's not changing the boundaries of, of the Bull Street District. What it is doing is amending the text within the Bull Street Planned Development District. And specifically, this request is to amend the language within the special district to allow structures up to 10 stories. Currently, they are allowed in, and this map up here shows the areas identified as special district within the Bull Street Planned Development. Currently, 10 stories are allowed on, on the properties fronting Hardin Street. This was permitted within the shaded area to the northwest, fronting Colonial Drive and Bull Street.
So you, you're looking to amend it for the Colonial? Is that the way I read it?
Sure, this, this would amount, this would amend the-
Yeah, it's a major amendment, right.
Yeah, so with, within the, within the area shaded, kind of gray.
Yep.
All that area would allow 10 stories. Currently, the parts on Hardin Street already allows 10 stories.
Andrew, which area did you say already allows 10 stories?
Along Hardin Street, so the eastern portion of the property. So, so the red outline is the entire Bull Street Planned Development District, but the, the crosshatched area-
The New Medical University? Is that?
Right, along New Medical Street is the university.
That's already zoned 10 stories?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In the shaded gray, where's Hardin Street at? The back end? In the shaded gray, what I'm looking at, right there?
Right, the crosshatched area, yeah.
Okay, so this, the part to your left up there?
Yes.
That's Hardin Street in the back, correct?
No, the upper, upper left, or my upper left, I guess, is, is Bull Street?
Okay.
And Colonial.
That's down by the REI, all the way down to the end.
Right, right. It, it's the, I believe that's the Williams Building that is kind of on the southern end of there, southern end of that crosshatched area. You're right, the REI is within that area, as is some of the new apartments.
To your right is where? To, to your right, that's where? The street?
Yeah, Hardin Street is on the far right.
Okay.
Are any of the developments there that already are cleared for 10 stories, maximizing the 10 stories?
There are, me along Hardin Street or that, I'm not entirely positive.
So we're just resetting all this for the reboot of a hotel that wants to go higher than the 75 feet that, that is required? Is that, is that fair to say?
Sure, although, again, it is allowed with, within the Hardin Street portion.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
Ms. Elizabeth Marks has signed up to speak.
Good afternoon.
Hughes Development reached out to the Robert Mills District a month or so ago about this issue, and it's, the area is actually larger than we discussed. So I'm glad we came today. What they had told us was that the new height that they're requesting on buildings actually was just along Colonial. But I'm seeing there's a portion on Bull, and there's a huge strip along Hardin Street. Our concern, of course, is the Robert Mills Historic District and the fact that all of those buildings, all of those historic buildings are much lower than 10 stories. So what we asked of them is to not make any requests for 10-story buildings along Calhoun Street. I have to say that I'm a little concerned about the size of their request. We understood it was just a strip along Colonial Drive. So I would have to say that we would have to go back and talk to the neighborhood about this. We didn't understand, we never knew that there was a strip of Bull Street involved. And the area of the, the concentration of these larger buildings is much greater than we expected. So I would ask that you defer a decision on this until we can get a little bit more clarity. This would also affect the Cotton Town neighborhood, which is right across Bull Street. And I'm not sure that they know about this yet either, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me leave it with that, at that.
Mr. Hughes is here, too, so I want to make sure we get all the-
Are they here? Okay. Yeah, we, this is way more than we expected. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The boss is coming.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for hearing our major amendment proposal to the Bull Street Zone Form-Based Code. Both of the sections that you see that Andrew had shown that are already listed as special district are exactly as they were presented in the 2012 Form-Based Code. So we're not changing the boundaries of any of the special districts as they exist and have existed for over 10 years. Our request is to allow up to 10 stories in both of the sections, whereas only one of them currently allows up to 10 stories. And that special district is done on a project-by-project basis. So unless you come to the Development Review Board and the DRB, which then goes through all of the city processes, is, is not allowed by right by any means. These are done on a case-by-case basis. So anything that is requested to be over the original six-story height limit is done project specifically.
Do you have a question, Mr. Brown? Tyler?
No, Mr. Mayor, I, I think there needs to be some more information on this. I was going to wait for Reverend Dow because of District 2, but I would, I think it's expedient to move to have, have a motion to defer this item. So maybe some more information can be gathered and discussed with the neighborhood, and we can go from there.
We have spoken to the Robert Mills neighborhood. I did speak to Ms. Marks a few months ago, as well as Denise Wellman with the Cotton Town neighborhood, to discuss the change.
And I would like some more information, too, about this, so I could, this is the first time I heard about it today.
Is, so we're chang, you're asking for the change in the one district that's current, and then I just want to make sure I have all this correct. One is already allowed. Everything of, the case-by-case would have to run through the board, correct?
Correct.
The design boards.
Just so I'm clear, so what street are we talking about changing? Which street is changing?
It's everything in the gray hatch would go to 10 stories on a project-specific basis.
But you're saying part of it's already allowed, right?
Correct. The one on the right, so Hardin Street-
That's Hardin Street.
Is already allowed.
Okay, and then, so that would be Bull and, so that's pretty far away from Calhoun, then?
Bull and Colonial is the exact opposite side of Calhoun.
So I'm curious, can we bring the other lady back up? Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Ms. Marks?
Yeah.
Ms. Marks?
So Calhoun's not affected by this?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not affected by it. But it's almost a quarter of the Bull Street property, and I'm also part of the Coalition of Downtown Neighborhoods, and I don't see Cotton Town here. And Colonial, that giant chunk over by Colonial, which is far larger than I thought it would be. I think that another neighborhood would be impacted by this and is part of our group. And I understood, and Chana was very gracious to reach out, that we were talking about simply a strip along Colonial Drive. But this is, this is far more density than we expected, and it certainly impacts our neighborhood. Calhoun Street has an entrance into this property. They're going to have one on Hardin, probably towards the middle of that large strip on Hardin. There's a major entrance at Bull and Elmwood. So, you know, we're, 10-story buildings add density to a large port, will, could add density to a large portion of this now. And I'm not sure that the traffic studies are prepared for that. The traffic studies were based on much smaller buildings. And so I think, I think this needs, I think this needs more discussion. I don't, we don't want to get in the way of a good thing, but this is way more than we anticipated and, and agreed to among the neighborhood, among the residents. This is, this is more than we expected.
So just to be clear, your, your main concern is the location? Or your main concern is?
It's two things. It's the density, which is going to, the original interest in our neighborhood was protecting the Calhoun Street Historic District's character and not adding more traffic to Calhoun Street, which already has a lot of traffic. But that was based on us understanding that the 10-story buildings and all of the people who would be in the 10-story buildings are going to be on Calhoun, are going to be on who would be in the ten-story buildings are gonna be on Calhoun, are gonna be on Colonial Drive. But this now would allow ten-story buildings on a quarter of the entire property, and, and we would need to see how that would impact not just our neighborhood with the traffic from that kind of density, but also Cotton Town. It's more than we ex- it's more than we envisioned, and it's not what we expected from the conversation.
Is, is it a masting issue, or would it be, in your opinion, you know, if you, you had some kind of indication of, how many ten-story buildings are we really talking about?
How many ten-story buildings?
Because right now, it looks very large, I get your, what you're saying.
Yeah, are we talking about ten-story buildings that have hundreds of one-bedroom apartments in them? Are we talking about ten-story commercial buildings? That's a lot of density, and when the Bull Street, uh, District was originally envisioned, that was not part of it. And the traffic study that was commissioned was based on the expected density of lower buildings and lower numbers of cars. So yes, we're worried about traffic, we're worried about congestion, it's, um, it would allow a lot of ten-story buildings, and we don't know what the uses are for those buildings yet.
So you're asking then, the community?
Pardon me?
You're asking the commu- is the community, um, been a part of that conversation with, with Chandler and Hughes?
Yeah, if we could talk, if we had more time to talk with Chandler and get the other neighborhoods that border this involved, Cotton Town specifically, um, it could also impact Elmwood Park. We're not saying no, we're just saying, can we look at this a little bit closer?
It's close.
What I hear, what I hear you saying though, is that you need to talk more, need more conversation.
Blocks away from there.
Say it again?
Right. Colonial. Once you cross Colonial?
We'll talk.
Drive, the other side's Elmwood Park.
Bull Street is, I mean, Elmwood Park's like six blocks from here.
Not too far.
It's got comments.
Yeah.
Elmwood Park isn't six blocks.
What we're talking about is more conversation.
Pardon me?
It's more than two, for sure. It's gotta be at least four blocks from that, from that, from Colonial.
Yeah, but that intersection at Elmwood and Bull Street is already a huge problem in the mornings and the afternoons. I mean, and the incoming traffic from Colonial, that flow of traffic from Colonial, if we have that much density on Colonial into that area, would be significant. Harden Street, I think we're okay on Harden. Colonial depends on where they would put the entrance on Colonial, but we already have the traffic for the, for the hospital system on Colonial. I, I, I think we need to know more about the ten-story buildings.
Mr. Mayor?
That's, and that's the thing, that, that's the thing that I was alluding to, is whether or not, there, there has been that kind of conversation, and what the community is asking for is continued conversation, is that right?
Yes, just give us more time.
Mr. Mayor, we have a meeting next week. I, I don't see why we can't have a conversation within seven days and put this on next week's agenda for a vote, and I think that's more than enough time for, there to be a conversation with Bull Street Group and the neighborhood, possibly in, in your conference room, Mr. Mayor, so we just iron this out and get it voted on.
So you, so your thought process is that you're talking about a deferral only on the vote, not the public hearing?
That's correct.
Because this would then be, because if not, the public hearing cannot be till November eighteenth.
I, I think we should be good with just a defer, defer, defer on the vote versus public hearing, so we don't slow anything up.
I guess, I guess what concerns me is that the, the, I mean, there's been significant conversation with the area about this already, so I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not like they're, they're not gonna have fifty ten-story buildings. So, I think what we're doing is, they're not. I mean, it's just not the way it works, so, I guess what I'm saying is, you were okay with the concept of a ten-story building, but now the, the anxiety of more buildings?
The entirety, the, the, we expected the area to be smaller, that they were going to be limiting those ten-story buildings to a strip along Colonial Drive. This is much more land than we anticipated.
Chandler?
I just want to add that we're not asking to increase the overall entitlements for the Bull Street District, just the height, so, we wouldn't be increasing density necessarily. We're still only zoned for three-point-three million square feet of commercial and civic space, so if it's taller, that doesn't mean that there's more of it.
Which means it's limited in, in the course. Does, does that makes, does that make you feel better?
Yeah, that's better, okay, I think we're okay with that, yeah.
Good with that, then?
Yeah.
Cause that, cause it really comes...
They've capped it, if they've capped it, that wasn't information that we had, but if they've capped it...
That's part of the original development agreement, right, Ms. Chandler? Okay, does that make you feel better?
Mm-hmm, yes, we're good.
So, Tyler, would you be okay us doing a first reading but still having further conversation? Cause I do think there's some more information could be shared, since we know it's a cap anyway, based on the, the, how many square foot they're allowed to build.
We could put it to a vote now for first reading, and then, and I still have some questions I would need answered within the next seven days and...
I think, would you be willing, Chandler, to sit down with, with, with the neighbors and everybody else and have some further conversation, and then, if there needs to be some adjustments, Tyler, we do it before second reading?
Yes.
Does that work for you, sir?
Works.
Ms. Marks, is that amenable?
Right.
Good job.
All right, well...
Mr. Mayor, I just listened to this conversation. This conversation happens more and more, I think it actually happened earlier on the development off of Garner's Ferry, where developers come in and, and do a traffic study to a certain extent with the mindset of surrounding neighborhoods that they should go farther. Clint Shealy, we've talked about this, the Vista, you know, as our city grows, our urban core grows, what's the new standard that we should hold developers to? Now, I'm just throwing that out there now, and I think it, it's a conversation that needs to happen. You know, the bare-bones traffic studies, I don't think are doing us justice anymore. There needs to be a more comprehensive...
We also gotta be able to define that, though, I mean, if you're talking about the Vista where we have a mile in diameter of parking lots, it's empty, it's totally different than a residential area that's over, you know, the, the school system and the traffic there, so, and we got major orderies there, I'm all for that, but I think we gotta be, I don't think a blanket is the same approach, I think we need to make them specific for those areas.
The, the more impactful, like the Garner's Ferry developments happen, happening?
I think that, I think that would be well worth looking at, too.
I think the mayor's right, it's, 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 you know, what, we really, we do want density, and, and sometimes density is counterintuitive, and sometimes density actually leads to less traffic because you have a more concentration of people, and I use the example all the time, I have four daughters, one, one's still in college, but the other three live elsewhere, and they all, they don't use their car, they don't want a car, because they live in denser areas where there's more to do, and they, they, they wanna walk everywhere, so, so it's really, it's, 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 to Will's point, though, it's, it's something, as we grow, and, and as we evolve as a community and as a city, we, we have to become more comfortable with the growth aspects of growth. Uh, so, so I, I'm glad you're, I'm glad we're doing, look, this is government at work right here, so this is good, um, because it is important that, that you have that voice, um, and, and that we listen to, you know, how do we grow as a community, and how do we, you know, accept that growth, really, is really what, what...
Misguided urban planning shouldn't affect us so deep into the future.
Let me just point out too, that, Chandler, when was the last traffic study done?
Twenty sixteen, and then it's been re- invalidated with the university's block on Harden Street.
So there hasn't been a traffic study yet for this planned, um, change to the, uh...
Well, we know we got a cap there, but we're gonna have some further discussion, so we'll get that lined up immediately. Thank you, thank you for, thank you both for, for making the wheels work.
One thing I did want to mention, just for the sake of clarity, I brought it back to this aerial from, from the more schematic map, um, just to kind of show, because the schematic map shows the pre-development...
Right.
...status of Bull Street, right? So some of the landmarks are not quite there. You know, basically, th- the special district that's, that's affected, uh, starts here around Matilla Evan Street, runs through a portion of the existing ballpark, goes north, and, and really is bound by the park on, on the east. And, and there's a fair amount of development there already, it's certainly not fully developed, otherwise, the, you know, this, there would be no purpose for the...
Does text, does, does increasing the height call for change in text for sidewalk diameter, setbacks, and anything off Colonial, Bull Street?
N- no, no, it is, is simply an amendment saying it, it can be up to ten feet if, if approved through the, the DRB.
Probably, it sounds like to me, part of the clarity needs to be at, at where Colonial comes into Bull, it seems to be probably the point to have a little more discussion where REI is now, cause that's what's shaded in there. And then, and then you, you push back a little bit, um, and then the park borders there, so, yeah, we'll have some further discussion. Reverend McDowell, is there a motion?
So move.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second for first reading, uh, with the understanding that, um, Hughes Development and the Downtown Neighborhood will get together, um, will set up that meeting here, I think you wanted to participate, Mr. Bailey, so we'll work on a date here in the mayor's conference room to have that discussion. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan? Sorry, I'm, I'm gonna double back. Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item is a text amendment, um, and this is amendment to the, the UDO to amend the standards for duplexes and setbacks in the RDMV District. You, you may recall, a, a few months ago, there was an amendment to the RDMV District, which is, um, not, not a hundred percent coternumous with the Granby Mill Village District, but, but largely is the Granby Mill Village District, and that text amendment was to restore a provision from our old ordinance that, that would allow a duplex to be built on a, a three-thousand-three-hundred-square-foot, um, historic lot. And, um, the, the, the community has asked that there be a, a restriction placed on the conversion of single-family residences to duplexes, so you would still have the, able to build a, a, a new duplex on a vacant lot, but if it is a existing single-family residence, uh, this would, this would not allow that conversion to a duplex.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against?
No one has signed up.
All right. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
And that concludes the public hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, aha.
Our next item is a public hearing, item twenty-two, resolution... Resolution number R-2025-071, supporting the Housing Authority of the City of Columbia engaging in the disposition of one-seven-zero-seven South Beltline Boulevard, seventeen-twenty-one, Springwood Lakes Drive, seventeen-forty-four Springwood Lakes Drive, and two-nineteen Windsor Point Road. TMS number R-136080112, R-170120159, R-170120167, and R...
So move.
Thank you. This reminds me...
This reminds me of that commercial where they call for the backup to come in.
I paused and gave you the option, okay?
Got a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
We do need to open it up for a public hearing.
It, it is a public hearing, I apologize. Is there anybody to speak for or against the Housing Authority? This is just for us to support their disposition of these properties, uh, to be, put out into the public sector.
No one signed up.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three is Resolution number R-2025-072, authorizing release and abandonment of an existing sixty-six-foot city access utility in storm range easement along Richland County, TMS number one-five-zero-zero-zero-two-two-seven, and TMS number...
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Next, we have City Council Committee Reports, Referrals, and New Business, and, I read, it reads out. Okay, and you can have Ms. Bustles.
I was saying that one.
Jeff's running.
Um, I'm not sure, I'm completely clear about this, and so I definitely would not have asked Jeff to handle this one, but the referral that we received is really a staff-driven referral based off the Planning Commission's, um, approval of splitting the DDRC, the De- Design Development and Review Commission into two boards.
Yes.
Um, and so we felt like, I mean, it could have just come straight to council, but we felt like this was worthy of some further discussion, so the thought was that we would refer it to the Administrative Policy Committee.
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Madam Clerk, you read the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
All of that does fall under Jeff's, uh, oversight with his operating.
You know, this stemmed, this actually came from one of our neighborhoods several years ago, and staff has really molded around, and I know they were very supportive because the DDRC, the crossover between a neighborhood and a commercial design review are significantly different, and, and it really, uh, is gonna allow some more dialogue, and I think it's gonna improve, uh, getting things worked out, uh, in a manner where, where folks aren't, um, um, upset with each other and more, because it's not, they're not mixing commercial and residential, so I, I, I look forward to that getting through our committees and onto our agenda.
Are there any other referral, oh, I'm sorry, was there a vote on that?
Mr. Bailey?
I have a, a report from the Arts Historic Preservation and Development Committee.
Please.
Uh, we had a great meeting today, uh, Rashawn Mayer, who is the founder and I, of, uh, the Creative Culture Art Expo, they're in their fifth year, and, uh, they have an event this upcoming weekend on Saturday, Lipstick and Hair, there should be a flyer that, a printout that y'all have, and they're doing great work in not only, um, supporting the arts, but investing in artists, uh, I would encourage everybody to watch the YouTube recap of the committee, they're doing a lot of good work, we've had a lot of local artists featured in magazines that have come up through this, uh, this group, so, uh, we're excited to hear from them, and hopefully there's some areas of opportunity for the city to partner with them in the future.
Thank you for bringing this forward, uh, Councilman Bailey. Any other reports or referrals?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure where to send this, but after last night's, uh, candidate forum at Columbia College, I had a long conversation about somehow getting the city and/or the county and the local universities more involved in a more comprehensive internship program with the private sector. Thought about, talked to Ms. Wilson about it, and thought maybe we should send it to the Economic Development Committee, but she brought up that there is already a Town and Gown Committee, so...
And we have an intern fair, we just had part of it today.
Yeah, so, so maybe, maybe we do like a joint, um, discussion with the Town and Gown, I can meet with Councilman Brennan and the Economic Development. I just think the, the, again, the, the, the soil is, is fertile for, and we talk about keeping our young folks here and having them more engaged, and I, I just think, last night just kind of hit me that, I think, I think the timing's perfect for us to really try to develop a, a comprehensive-type, uh, intern program with the, uh, private sector. Our Colite Technologies, our company, um, that I'm not really involved in the management, I mean, I think they have like twelve, uh, interns currently working at Colite Tech, and, and it's really just an amazing, um, program, and, and we end up hiring probably a third of those, uh, for full-time jobs after they graduate.
Well, that was the biggest complaint, when we created the Council of Engagement, have all six colleges, university, Columbia College, uh, students are very involved, that was one of the things that came out, is they didn't know about the internships here or the availability, they didn't know the jobs, cause nobody's been on the campuses...
It's always that connectivity between the, the, the different entities.
And so today, I think, what, I don't know what the number was, over three hundred, you know, were there at the Coliseum, meeting the different businesses, so... and job opportunities that they didn't know about are a big, big part of that. So we can figure out a way to do it.
And I made the point last night that Columbia is a small business community. It's a small and medium-sized community, it's not a big business community. So I think that's what we offer, and we shouldn't be ashamed of that, that's just who we are. So I think we should embrace it. So I will just not do a referral, but I will just meet with Councilman Brennan and see if we can maybe enhance this a little bit going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if this is a referral or not, maybe it's new business, but Chief, I may need your help on this, too. Reverend McDowell and I were at Golden Acres State meeting last week, and it's not the first time I heard about some people complaining about stray dogs running around neighborhoods. And we also received some correspondents asking if our, I believe under code, to look into having a dog catcher, possibly for stray dogs in some areas. I'm not sure if that's a thing. I just remember hearing about dog catchers when I was a kid. So do police departments or cities have dog catchers?
Well, our Animal Services Department does do that, yes, sir.
So they would try to catch the dogs that are running around?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've had that incident at Golden Hill Acres before, where there were some pit bulls that were running around, but when, you know, it's, they seem to disappear when they see our white trucks coming around.
That's a dangerous job to get out there and chase a pit bull around the neighborhood.
Clint, could you say a word to us about that? You've been very helpful with us in the past with dogs, with animal services. Would you say a word?
Yes, sir. We do have our Animal Services Division within the Public Works family, and we have several animal control officers that are on call to address that. If it's outside the city limits in the county, which I think what we most recently dealt with, Reverend McDowell, the county also has animal control officers, so we've got staff that can respond to those aggressive dogs, dogs roaming the area, and just a matter of knowing about it and responding.
Thank you.
Do you have an intern program?
We do not, but I would love to develop one.
Thank you, Clint.
Hey, you go first, and we'll be right behind you.
Yeah. It is very dangerous work, and they're really skilled at what they do.
I would like to thank somebody for catching some of these stray dogs if y'all think bring with council, because that's something, that's commendable.
Yes, sir.
Our staff to further commend them, if you remember the recent issue out at Harbison State Forest, our staff was very involved with the state and DNR and trying to resolve that issue with those aggressive animals. So setting traps and that sort of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
Thank you, Clint.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
This might be new business for Mr. Clint as well. I've received some feedback on our app, and I know we're always looking for ways to make it better. I think one of the kind of roadblocks that, no pun intended, people get around when they're reporting potholes that are on a state road, is we resolve it because it's not technically in our jurisdiction, but then there, it's unclear what they do next. And so I had a pretty long discussion about that, and I know that SCDOT may not be using the same technology, but if we can talk about what a better follow-up would be, where they know exactly what they need to do, or have some other sort of status like pushed to SCDOT, so it doesn't feel like it's resolved when it's not.
Yes, ma'am. No, I, and I've heard that as well, Dr. Bustles. I think either information about contact or that we've pushed that on to them, some notification, and then, you know, talking with DOT and their technical folks, that there's a link, if they have an online way to report that as well. We'll look into that further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further? All right, Madam Clerk?
For public input, we have Ms. Diane Wiley, followed by Mr. Wade Fulmer.
Good afternoon, how you doing?
I'm good, Ms. Wiley, how about yourself?
I'm mayor, city council, and Mr. Reese. First of all, when I was up here, I'm going to get off this for five minutes, where I was talking about the neighborhoods and growth. First, the community come first, then the growth. You know, can you make sure you, the community can come first. If we have problems with these neighborhoods, other people coming in and putting these stuff. I'm for growth, but that little gray-looking thing, is that close to Reed Street and Harden?
No, ma'am.
Okay, because we got some land there, too, you know, that need to be developed.
You looking to sell?
What I'm in here for, what I'm in here for, I met, oh, I talked to Mr. Peter over there on Scurry and Bronx. He said that he lived in St. Andrews, Irma, and he want to put a place where he cleaned up people's yards in that little spot, you know, Beltline, Scurry, and Bronx, with a little triangle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I told him, no, that's why we got garbage service and trash service. He said that he was going to put one there, because when we have problems with the zoning thing and the city can't get there, he'll be picking it up. I said, no, we paying for service, you know. I said, you can't just come in. And so the neighborhood do not want it. I'm getting a petition to make sure they sign, you know, they sign for it, and he didn't know that we had an association out there.
He found out quickly, didn't he?
He asked about my background. I said, I don't need to tell you about my background. I'm doing what I supposed to do. But that little area used to be a little ice cream dairy place. It's pretty, it's a pretty piece of land, but we cannot have trash in that area, because the house, it's a house will be on the side, one in the front and one on the other side, like triangle, like, and then the air-conditioned place. If you're not grandfathered in our area, you can't be coming there putting what you want to put in there. And I would like for us to try to go through a law of what we can do and what we can't do, because they think they can come over in 29204 and do whatever they want to do.
We need to get you a zoning map.
And I want to be on some of these committees. Attorney Bailey?
We'll work on that.
I'm so used to saying attorney.
Be careful what you wish for, Tyler.
I want to be with the Bull Street thing, because I was for Bull Street, but I want to see some of that prettiness coming out in our neighborhood. And I'm watching.
Coming.
I'm watching. And 10 stories is kind of high.
Can't be scared of height.
I am scared of height.
Boy, I'm going to take you flying.
But I want the growth, but I want to see some of that beautification coming in our neighborhood, because we just right there. I want to be on that committee, you know. And you know, I'll go anywhere.
Started in your community, we're going to keep going, right?
I got plenty of time now, you know.
We started in your community, 65 homes over there.
Yeah, I got you, I got you, don't worry about that. I got you, but I, you know, just listen to these homeowners, you know, because we're not going anywhere, you know. We're not going anywhere.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley.
I'm here to stay, here to stay. But that's what he want to put, some trash in our neighborhood.
No trash.
No trash, you know. I told him, we got 655 houses, my time.
Thank you.
Mr. Wade Fulmer?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to add to Mr. Brown's comment that Columbia College had a great event last night. It is really good to see students, the Student Government Association encouraging students to be involved and insisting on the integrity of democracy and what we're supposed to be doing. Back to nuisance, city dereliction, and more. I'm not going to read over a bunch of questions like I have before and repeat them again. I do want to bring a couple of them up. I want to say, what if the victim was a disabled or ill person, or foster child or elder or someone in care? Or if the person was an abused person? And today we're reminded of, if the person was a victim of domestic violence, or from a mental health care, or a children's facility. I worked in mental health. I don't see where this council is very well understanding of what mental health does and how it affects the residents of the community. Why did, a little bit more detail to this question, why did Ms. Thie accompany the surprise defense witness, Ms. Burnett LaFleur, to the darkened corner of the courtroom? This is not going away. You can get answers, and you should have answers. Why the tampering, withholding of evidence after months of city time for court preparation withheld from the city court, not provided by city attorneys? And yet, those questions, and I'll repeat this, as I, you attended the 9/11 remembrance honoring victims, first responders, military, veterans. One thing I've learned in my career, especially in bureau hypocrisy, is that accountability takes time. But there's some of us out there who are working in the community for the people, who are asking questions and they do not get answers for two years. Mr. Mayor, do you believe that division staff, our supervisors, would lie to questions by an independent authority? We have but the city silence. We have the dance by the city, and we have dereliction. We need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up.
Mr. Brennan?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brennan, I'm, obviously we'll defer to Mr. Brennan. Our executive session items have some carryover. Would you like me to read them all this time?
Thank you.